Yep, are you ready?
Good evening.
Recording in progress.
Oh, excuse me. Good evening, I will call the order of the Centennial School District Board of Directors' regular meeting for December 10th at 6:30 PM. And, board members, we are going to request a motion to approve the agenda with flexibility. Second. It's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. And now we're moving on to the most important part of the evening is the introduction of our guests, and I'm going to hand this off to you Superintendent Owens.
Great, I don't know if it was Athletic Director Dante Gouge who told everybody to come at six, but we had a prompt and attendant crew tonight, so it's good to see so many faces here. Earlier today, we were looking at certificates for the athletes that are being recognized this evening, and there were just a stack of certificates which really speaks to the success that our athletes have had this year, and the success that our teams have had, and the improvement of our overall academics in the last few years here in Centennial. So, it's great to see so many of you this evening, and it's great especially to see our students being recognized. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to CHS Principal Maren Miller and Athletic Director Dante Gouge to introduce and help us recognize our athletes.
I know it's been a very exciting sports season every year for the last several years, we've seen an increase in numbers, and it has just been an extraordinary fall season. Our Athletic Director's going to talk a little bit more, but we had two of our sports teams go off to state playoffs, and they did a very excellent job, so let's give everybody a round of applause.
As I've said before, one of our goals is to grow the athletic department, and this has been probably the biggest fall season we've had as of late. From what we know, it's the first time in more than 10 years that we actually had to cut athletes from the girls soccer program, which was terrible in its own right, but it was really exciting at the same time where we had so many girls showing interest, and Coach Gabby had girls consistently all summer long, which kind of speaks a little bit to their success. So, we do have a very large stack and a list, I'm glad that I remember my glasses because it's very small print to keep it on one sheet. So, we will go through and try to recognize them, and when we do say your name, please stand up if you're in attendance. I know there are people behind me and in the hallway, if you are in the hallway, feel free to kind of pop in so you can be seen. We will start with cross-country, Senior Honorable Mention Cody Chen. Another senior, second team, so in cross-country, seven athletes make a team, so for cross-country, if you're first team, you're in the top seven of conference, the next seven is second team, and then the 15 through 21 makes up honorable mention. So, in second team, Senior Emily Gonzalez Torres. And then our first state qualifier and first team is Senior Ariana Miesnick. Sorry, I think I said that, she's our first state qualifier in a very long time, so sorry, she's not our first state qualifier ever, I don't want to offend anybody. So, switching to football, again, we had good numbers all football season, kind of an exciting season this year. So, first team all-league linebacker, Senior Luke Chambers. First team punter, and this one was kind of a crazy one, as a freshman, Driver Curtis. Second team honors went to defensive line David Schmoll. Junior center Manny Soriano Mercado. Second team utility player, which means he played probably about seven different positions on the offensive side of the ball, was Aiden Tayema. Second team place kicker, again, freshman Driver Curtis. And then we had several honorable mentions, corner Ian Madrano. Linebackers Hunter Rubio and Jed Schneider. Wide receiver Tim Petrinko. Tight end Henry Niss Foreman. And again, honorable mention at safety, Tim Petranko, sorry. On the girls soccer side, notoriously, the girls soccer, our conference, the Northwest Oregon Conference is very, very strong in soccer, in both sides. So, making any type of all-league when it comes to soccer in the end walk is really, really impressive. So, on the girls soccer team, second team all-conference midfielder Isabel Lacona. Second team defender Lily McDermott. And then the following athletes were received honorable mention, midfielder Kyla Davis. Defender Genesis Aguiano. Defender Evalet Veretta. Midfielder Lindsay Chavez Perez. And currently warming up for a basketball game goalkeeper Jaslyn Laurel Rios. If we switch to volleyball, because I have a big list for boys soccer, so we're going to do a boys soccer list, honorable mention Libero Brianna Crest. Honorable mention setter Abigail Diaz. We had two first-team selections, outside hitter Maya Kirkpatrick. And outside hitter and also the Northwest Oregon Conference Player of the Year, Junior Kayalani Scheidler. On the boys soccer side, we'll start with honorable mention, defenders Mong Thang. Who is a freshman, so to get an award in the Northwest Oregon Conference in boys soccer is phenomenal. So, defender, Senior Kevin Gatika. Goalkeeper Lucas Young. Second team all-conference honors went to forward Giovanni Gatika. And midfielder Juan Dominguez. First team honors went to defender Manuel Gatika. Midfielder Isaac Gonzalez. This next athlete that got first team as a midfielder for us was also just recently named the Oregon 5A Most Valuable Teammate, so we just found that out just days ago, Josue Evangelista. And then junior forward, first team and Player of the Year Alex Valencia. We also would like to acknowledge one of our teachers in district who was also picked as Northwest Oregon's Conference Coach of the Year Todd Sacks. And what we also found out this week is we also have several state honors for boys soccer. So, third team all-state, which is, these are, this is amazing to have this many, is midfielder Juan Dominguez. Defender Manuel Gatika. Second team all-state Jose Evangelista. And second team all-state midfielder Isaac Gonzalez. First team all-state and the 5A Boys Soccer Player of the Year Alex Valencia. The one thing I also did miss, I'm sorry, Coach Gabby Nowortsky is actually behind me for the girls soccer program, and, she's back there, Coach Gabby. Coach Julie Hilson Tager is not able to make it, she had knee surgery, and then obviously we are missing Coach Michael Waller from volleyball, so, well done, one more round of applause. Probably one of the most exciting things was communicating to Alex and telling him that he was state Player of the Year, and he's like, well, what does that mean? And that is voted on by all of the coaches throughout 5A Boys Soccer, so every coach from every school has votes for that, so he was picked by the coaches from around the state, so. He's playing with a broken wrist, so yeah, it's pretty amazing to be acknowledged like that and then be voted on by the coaches around the state for that honor, so that's really a huge thing. And we fell a little short of that championship game, but it was just such a phenomenal season, so kudos to the boys soccer program, we have their third-place semifinalist trophy in the athletic office and league champion, so it was just a phenomenal year for Todd and his staff.
Let's give everybody Dante Gouge, because, and our sports teams, our students, and especially our parents that have been supporting our students this fall season, another round of applause, big thank you, it's been extraordinary.
Now, don't move yet, right? Board members, if you'd like to comment or say anything, David, we'll start with you. There you go. Director Harden.
Congratulations, everybody, well done. Go Eagles!
Director Stiles.
Congratulations, and what a great, you guys are all great representatives of Centennial, and, you know, extra special thanks, I know it's hard to be a student, it's hard to be an athlete, it's hard to be a parent of a student athlete, so double clap for all you.
Director Newman.
Nothing to add beyond what Rose just said, which was, I 100% agree, so great work everyone.
Thank you. So, what we want to do is make sure that you have a moment to be, you know, with your teammates if they're here, with your parents, grandparents, and other supporters that are here with you tonight. Take a moment, if you'd like to take some pictures, we will clear out at this top area, so if you'd like to take pictures here with the Centennial sign, if you would like to meet in the foyer, however you feel, like you'd like to have a little moment of celebration, we're going to take a break to let you have that time. So, thank you so much, and our communications director, is she going to?
She's going to organize us over in this area.
Oh, hey!
For group and team, yeah.
Put down, see, I can follow instructions. Thank you so much, everybody, it's been a joy to have. Also a part of that, those of you who are in attendance this evening, so appreciate the recognition you were giving them as they were leaving as well, that's it. It's an important time, and you know what time, you know what it takes for these students, and you also know what it takes for these parents to support, parents and guardians to support. Am I doing that, or is it? Okay, I'm fine, good. All right, board members, back to the agenda, please. We need our approval of the November 12th minute, so do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from November 12th.
And a second? Don't everybody like jump at it? Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the November 12th meeting, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And by the way, we say it and then we raise our hands because we do know that we have people on Zoom, and then we want them to know that, how people are voting, so if you see us doing a lot of this during a meeting, that's one of the reasons why, so just indicate that. All right, before we move along in this, we are going to do a little bit of jumping around in our agenda, and the next thing we're going to be doing is our report. As students, we know you have other things to get to in an evening, so I'm coming to you, Easton, for your student rep report, is there anything you need to pull together for us, or you just? All right, thank you.
Okay, since the last month, we've had many new events throughout the school, and to start, I'm going to talk about the Unity Week, which we had through November 9th through the 14th, and really, it was just an opportunity for the school to come together and just unite us, and just bring our diverse range of groups in the school together, and we just wanted to dedicate it to all the groups of like the school who just don't feel united, and we just wanted to like really bring everyone together, and just have like a week where we can all have fun and just treat each other like, just nice. And so, we had some activities, and for example, I'm going to say, on Monday, we did a kindness sash, so how it worked was, a kindness sash got assigned to somebody, and throughout the day, this kindness sash will be given by this person to another student based off like, if they do something kind, the kindness sash will be moved on, and when it gets moved on, the original holder, or the holder previously before, writes their initials or their name or whatever they want on it, and then they give it to the next person, and then it just went out throughout the school, and so we had this sash that just had a bunch of students' signatures and their names that just shows all the kindness that we have throughout the school. And another example is our gratitude ballot box, which is really just like a note, you can give somebody a positive note, or just write something to someone to like lift their day up, if somebody knows is struggling, or you just want to give somebody a nice word, you can just write a note to them and it'll get delivered to them. And there was also spirit days, and the spirit days was on Monday, you, it's Adam Sandler Day, so try to dress up as Adam Sandler as best as you can. There was no school Tuesday, but Wednesday, it was culture day, so you got to represent your culture. Thursday was Throwback Thursday, so you could pick any other decade than now and dress up as it. And Friday was Liar Liar Day, so you wear a shirt and you write a lie about yourself. And also, from November 17th to the 25th, we had the Centennial Eagle Care, so, just like before, it's the Centennial Food Drive where we get the donations from third periods, we get all the cans, but we also tried to open it up to, we opened up the hygiene and spices, and even money, and we did this because the people that got the cans, they weren't able to, they're not able to purchase spices themselves, they could only get cans, so we had the opportunity to bring in spices and bring in hygiene and even protein and money, because they can't purchase anything other than like normal cans, so, since we had this opportunity, it was great to give out these extra stuff to our low-income families in the community. And the competition took place between third-period classes, we picked up the cans, and it was delegated to different departments to see which group won, so there was a winner in the science department, there was a winner in the math department, the English department, the PE slash health department, the social studies department, the CTE department, and lastly, the ELD foreign arts department. And the winning class won a party hosted by us, I don't exactly remember who won. And then, on December 3rd, we had the Club Fair, which was a great chance for various clubs and groups to just try to get their name out and advertise themselves to many students at lunch, which was hosted at both lunches. And lastly, something that's happening right now is the Teddy Bear Toss slash Drive, this is all This also happened last year. So pretty much this year, it's going to be at today, at the girls' basketball game, on the 16th, at the boys' basketball game, and the 17th, and the 17th at, at the wrestling, at the wrestling tournament. It's just like, you know, at hockey games where they throw the teddy bears onto the, onto the, the ice. It's going to be like that. And so the parents or students or whoever can come and throw the teddy bears onto the, onto the court. And pretty much what's going to happen is us at student council, we're going to collect all the teddy bears. And we're going to bring all the teddy bears. And on December 19th, we're going to have a Santa's visit. We're going to have, we have, we have a Santa, a guy who dresses up as Santa. He's going to come in and then we're going to have a lot of low income students from Palbeau, I believe. Yeah, Palbeau, we're going to have low income students from Palbeau and they're going to come in and there's going to be Santa and we're going to have like a Christmas workshop. And they're all, and they're going to come around and they're going to look at all the teddy bears. They're going to pick out their teddy bears. And it's just, it's just really to like give an opportunity to the students who, who don't have like, who may not have as much like privilege in Christmas or like the holidays. Like we're just trying to give them a, an experience to, for them to remember in their holidays that they might not be able to have. And lastly, we have the, the door decoration contest going on right now. So it's just decorating your doors during advisories. And we're going to, and, um, next week on Wednesday is going to be the last day to decorate your door. The theme is Christmas, I think it's winter, winter wonderland. And voting will take place and a winner will be, will be decided. I think the winner gets also a party, but I'm not sure about that either. And that's all.
Thank you. Director Lynn, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Um, then Director Newman?
No questions. I appreciate these updates. Gives me things to go back and ask my freshmen about.
Director Celeste.
Thanks a lot. Great job.
I love the idea of the teddy bears. That guy, you've, we have been, when you come and tell us about the activities that you're doing, you're also very creative and you have such community in mind. We really appreciate that and the leadership that we see. So thank you so much, Easton. Um, moving on through the reports, there has been quite a bit of interest in our immigration related protocols. So we wanted to take an opportunity to have a presentation on that particular topic. And so Superintendent Owens, I think you're going to be kicking that off, correct?
You are correct, Chair Shields.
Great. We've got a team effort here. As we, people get set in, I'll set the stage here. It's good that we have a, a group here to be able to hear about the work. So welcome. So Chair Shields, directors, thank you. Tonight, we are providing, as you mentioned, an overview of the district's ongoing work to support students and families during a period of increased immigration enforcement activity in the broader community. We want to acknowledge the real fear and uncertainty many in our community are experiencing as well as those who have been directly impacted. These experiences show up in our schools and affect students' sense of safety and ability to engage in learning. These circumstances reinforce the importance of clearly outlining the district's responsibilities and the actions that we are taking in response. Our goal this evening is to walk through the structures and practices we have in place, the training and communication that we've provided and the supports available to families. It's important to note that this work is not new. It's grounded in our ongoing commitment to equity, your January proclamation, which is posted on the wall, in state and federal law, and in our responsibility to ensure that every student feels safe, welcomed and supported in our schools. As I mentioned, our work begins with the commitments the board reaffirmed in January. These commitments ground the district's approach, protecting student well-being, ensuring supportive and inclusive schools, upholding student and family privacy, safeguarding access to education for every child regardless of immigration status, and rejecting the words and actions of all persons rooted in fear and hate. These are the expectations we follow in designing our protocols, communicating with families and supporting staff. I'll manage the slides, but we have a team here this evening of district office staff who are leading this work and each of them will have an aspect that they'll be speaking to this evening. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to Director Wright.
Good evening, everyone. We do want to acknowledge what our schools are experiencing. There is fear and anxiety for many, many students, their families and staff in our schools. Some students are coming to school afraid and unsure about what might happen to them and their families. Some students are staying home because of that same fear. We have students whose family members have been detained in the community. While these incidents have not happened on our school grounds, they have a real emotional impact on students. We also have staff who are directly impacted as well. Some staff are worried about what might happen if federal agents come on our grounds. Other staff are worried about what could happen to them or their family due to their own immigration status. The fear is real that many are experiencing and we really want to acknowledge that. Once schools are made aware of specific situations, we have other staffs that jump into action with care and guidance while focusing on supporting the needs and determining resources that are available. We want to be thankful and thank the teachers, the office staff, bilingual liaisons, case managers, EL staff and other teachers and other staff, bus drivers, who are alerting counselors and school administrators and others about the needs that students have so that they can help determine those resources and make the connections. Examples of this are, at one school, we had a parent who was detained and the other parent asked the school to provide a letter of support and information regarding the impact that separation of a student can have on a child. At another school, we've had a parent who's been detained and the other parent was needing basic supplies and resources to get by day to day. Building staff who have the closest connections with students and families are supporting in real ways and they're also reaching out to those who can support with additional resources. We also want to emphasize that to date, we have not received any verified reports of immigration enforcement occurring on or adjacent to any centennial campuses. This would be defined as in close proximity to a campus that would disrupt the safety of operations and/or the learning environment. This is in alignment with our standard response protocols. We continue to monitor developments that are in the community, which are rapidly changing and are prepared to implement our protocols should the needs arise. We refine our practices and the resources as situations evolve. One of those experiences and opportunities is with the Centennial Virtual Academy.
CBA for families who request that option for their child's well-being. To this date, we've had between 10 and 15 students enroll for this reason.
In addition to understanding the current situation, it's important to clarify the legal framework that governs school response. Federal and state law gives students clear rights. They're entitled to receive a public education regardless of immigration status and their information is protected under FERPA. At the same time, districts cannot override the legal authority of federal law enforcement. Our responsibility is to verify any legal documentation, protect student records and ensure that interactions occur within clear legal boundaries. This includes consultation with district legal counsel. This framework shapes everything, every procedure we use and as you can see reflected there are various laws and policies. The district established formal immigration response protocols in 2017 and we updated them in 2024 to ensure alignment with FERPA OSBA guidance and current law. These protocols outline exactly what staff should do if federal officials come to a school or request information, including immediate notification to district leadership and verification of documentation. They also integrate with the standard response protocol, as Director Wright mentioned, used for all safety related situations as well as language in board policy, KNAR, relations with law enforcement agencies. This ensures staff have clear, consistent steps to follow.
Since we completed our revision of the immigration response protocols, we have worked to more fully integrate those practices district-wide. The effort began in January 2025, when the revised protocol was shared with all district staff in combination with a variety of resources to assist staff in their own supportive students. Those resources included materials related to MTSS practices, transformative social and emotional learning, FERPA, relevant board policies and guidance from the Oregon Department of Education. In August 2025 and continuing throughout this past fall, we have revisited the existing protocols, including role-specific training with staff groups who may be the most likely to implement the protocol components due to the nature of their work. To date, this has included administrators, secretaries, campus safety liaisons and school bus drivers. Principals were additionally asked to review and discuss these protocols with their full staff to tend to school-specific considerations and this site-level review will continue annually. One of our priorities as a part of Roadmap 27 is belonging and positively impacting our climate and culture, both at the school and classroom level. Staff are regularly participating in equity trainings, which include trauma-informed practices and information necessary to provide day-to-day support to students. Director Wright, do you have anything to add to that last bullet?
In fact, today, we had our second district-wide training of the year. Several folks that are here in the audience were there as well. And we had about 60 staff participating. This is part of our continued efforts that have happened the last couple of years. We've been doing work previous to that, but we've had really concerted efforts for every single one of our buildings and all of our departments to engage in equity work and that equity work has elements of trauma-informed practices as a part of it as well.
Thank you. We've also provided ongoing communication to our families on this topic. At the same time that we updated staff on the ICE protocols in January 2025, we also communicated with families to share the board proclamation, a list of what families can expect from our schools and district in response to immigration enforcement activities and community-based resources, including multilingual Know Your Rights training webinars. We continued that communication in February and again in November through superintendent update newsletters that acknowledged community fear, provided resources and encouraged families to reach out for support. We reiterated this information again in a standalone message to families this last October. It should be noted that communication with families is primarily done through Parents Square, which automatically translate messages and newsletters into the home language requested by the family that's in our synergy system. It is always our standard to make family information as accessible as possible for the widest range, range of languages that we are able to. At the same time, we began intentional communications with staff and families on this, sorry, on this topic in January 25, we also established our Immigration Resources webpage. Uh, the intention with building this webpage was to centralize important information and community partner resources in an easy-to-find location. We have shared the link to this page multiple times across various communications and the webpage also includes a translation feature for all of the same language translations that are available through Parents Square. Here you can see a list of just some of the resources currently available on our Immigration Resources webpage. We monitor this list frequently and update as appropriate. Example, just this morning, we received an updated resource list from the Oregon Department of Education and we'll be adding additional resources from that list to the webpage throughout this next week. Additionally, this fall, we created graphic flyers that include the same list of expectations that we first shared with families in January of 2025. These flyers have been translated into multiple languages and are posted at our schools and district office as well as on our resources webpage.
As we stated earlier, once building staff are alerted of a specific situation and student needs, our systems take into place, especially those that are connected with our multi-tiered systems of support. Those are in place to ensure that students and families get the resources and support that they need. Many of the resources are connected to very specific family situations. They're connected to culturally specific resources as well as potential referrals to legal organizations that can help support. We do have existing structures in place to support students who are experiencing traumatic and life-altering events. This happens to our students on a regular basis. We have a recent example, just this Sunday, we had multiple students and families who were impacted by a fire in our district. Information was provided across the three buildings that had students who were impacted. Staff have been collaborating with that.
Thank you. Um, staff have been collaborating with the students and the families to determine their needs and other staff have been accessing resources. We can do this process across many different situations. We also are using many of those situations. If a student's parent is detained, buildings can utilize the resources that we have available immediately to help support and they can reach out to district level, staff if more is needed. Other resources that have been available have to do with our community partners. We're so thankful for the work and the supports and the resources they can provide. In October, 20 staff members attended, um, a family preparedness training that was put on. It's a Train the Trainer event that was put on by Latino Network. And those members from the staff represented various roles from across many of our buildings. The purpose of all of these resources is to help reduce fear, help families navigate uncertainty and to support student well-being. Something else that we're really thankful for is the coordination with regional partners. We can't do this work alone. There's no way that we could do this work alone. It would be impossible. The impacts of immigration enforcement are felt throughout the region and we are coordinating closely with other school districts and organizations as partners in this work. There are a lot of engagement efforts that have happened. There are multiple longstanding, regularly scheduled meetings across Multnomah County that multiple cabinet members and other leaders attend. These groups are consistently collaborating around critical and time-sensitive needs that our communities are experiencing. Some of those organizations have been around for about 30 years and they've been collaborating for that long. We're in regular contact with a variety of officials at the county and city levels, both for us Portland and Gresham, to discuss needs. In addition to our regular meetings and contact, there have been very specific sessions focusing on immigration-related issues and community needs. Individuals here have attended and participated in those. District leaders have also met with the leadership from Latino Network. We also have buildings continuing to collaborate with our culturally specific community partners to provide specific student needs and they're also providing global information to families and resource support such as the Know Your Rights, um, trainings. We do continue to leverage our existing structures and relationships and those meetings across Multnomah County and the state. And those are similar things that we are reinforcing with our buildings. Let's use the resources, supports and structures that we have to support students and families during this time. An example of this is our current ICE protocol. We've shared it with many, many other districts and organizations. We've also reviewed many other districts and organizations' protocols and tools. Most of them are very, very similar. At this point, it's hard to tell who was the originator and who wasn't, but we're sharing the same resources. We're also following guidance from the Oregon Department of Education and we're monitoring federal updates. We have widespread collaboration and this helps to ensure that there's consistent practices regionally. And it also helps families receive accurate, dependable information. There are many, many things that are happening on the micro level across the state and there are very specific macro or individual micro things happening for students. It's not just one thing that will help to alleviate the situation, the fear and the anxiety. And this is what our community is experiencing and we need to do many, many steps to help support that.
Our commitment is ongoing. Obviously, this is a dynamic and evolving issue and impact to our community. Uh, that said, we will continue to refine our protocol as laws and guidance evolve, expand our multilingual resources, strengthen family engagement, reinforce trauma-informed supports and refresh staff training. We will remain attentive to shifts in local immigration enforcement activity and to the needs and experiences of our students. In closing, Centennial School District remains steadfast in its commitment to fostering safe, inclusive and welcoming schools for every student. We will continue to communicate clearly, uphold our legal and ethical responsibilities and support our students and families with care and consistency. Thank you for your leadership and continued partnership in this work. That concludes our report and we invite any questions that the board may have on this topic.
Thank you and thank you all. Um, there's so many faces. If there's anything that wasn't covered or you would like to add before we open it up to questions from the board? Anything just came into your head, you just got to say it.
We see Neil and Director Southerston and they haven't had a chance to weigh in.
They haven't said a word. Come on, you two.
But they're, they might be here for fielding questions as well. But they, they represent the safety and security edge of our efforts.
First, I'd like to introduce our Safety and Security Coordinator. For those who have not met, Neil O'Donnell, he's been with the district for the last year and a half, almost two years now. He's been with the district for the last year and a half, almost two years now, and has been leading the work with our campus safety liaison teams in the schools and really working with them to support students and belonging throughout all the work that we've been doing. But now, more than ever, you know, we see it working with teachers and secretaries and other staff members when it comes to what do I do if something, if somebody comes on the campus and they're not identified, I have concerns. And so it's the opportunity to work with them continuously on our standard response protocols and letting them know that the core tenet of that procedure is that anybody can call for a protocol at any point in time. No prior authorization is needed. You know, if your assessment is that we need to go into protocol, that's supported, and then they work with the district for support. So that's our standard practice, and Neil can speak more on different encounters that have come up and specific training that's been provided.
Good evening, everybody. I meet with the Campus Safety Liaison Team at least two times a month, Wednesday mornings, and this is a topic of discussion that we have. We're constantly reiterating the I Love You Guys Foundation guidance through standard response protocol. The team is very well aware and versed of what to do, when to do, how to call it, what to follow through with, who to contact with, et cetera. We have a full team throughout our district, four individuals placed at our high school, two placed at Centennial Middle School, one placed at Oliver Middle School. And again, training is something that they appreciate and call for, and so I meet them where they're at and make sure we cover the things that are necessary.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Board members, Director Harden, any questions?
Yeah, my question is kind of a specific one. What is the protocol like at bus stops? Because that is a public area, but it is, you know, it still follows our purview.
I'll speak to that because I actually met with the entire team of bus drivers to review the protocol and to talk about the nuances of how do we take a building protocol and apply it to buses. And the answer is, it is very case-specific. And so we really try to keep staff grounded in their informed decision-making that they already know how to do. If you approach a bus stop and there's law enforcement activity or any unsafe situation, it may be safer to keep the students on the bus and continue, call your supervisor at transportation, have them meet you at the next stop, and problem solve. If a student does not feel safe getting off the bus, we will allow that student to ride the route back and be delivered back at school so that school administrators can work with family on a safer form of contact. And so it's really, it really, I mean, every situation's going to be slightly different. And so really what we reviewed with our transportation team is how to stay grounded in that really informed decision-making for any unsafe situation that would happen, and we allowed them to raise some of those hypothetical questions they had and really talked through the nuances, looked through board policy to really reiterate what our stances are and what our rules are around certain situations as well. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
I'm soaking all of this information in. There's a lot, and it's a lot. I don't have any questions at this moment, but maybe before we're done, come back. I'm working on formulating a few things.
No problem. Director Newman?
Yeah, I have a couple, at least one question and a comment. First of all, just thank you for presenting this information. Even as a board member, I wasn't aware of quite everything, and what you presented today just helps keep me informed, too. I didn't see this anywhere in the protocol, but I'm curious about other partnership with community organizations or PERC. If there is, for example, an attempt by immigration enforcement to enter a school or ask for information about a student, is there anything in the protocols or have you considered for protocols reaching out to, say, PERC and say, hey, we had this event happen. I know a few weeks ago, the call went on at Menlo Park Elementary, at Menlo Park Elementary to have community just be at the school, be around the school at pickup, just to be observers. So has there been any conversation or thoughts about that sort of collaboration?
On this one, too. So I'm going to unpack a little bit the way you phrased your question because there's a couple of different instances. So asking for information versus trying to enter the school would be different protocols. One's FERPA, one's safety. So again, really getting into the nuances of a case-by-case. As with any situation on our campus that might present any type of safety concern, we're going to first address decreasing the safety risk. And so our first steps are going to be to initiate whatever steps we need to take to get the situation resolved, maintaining student safety at all times. As with any other emergency situation, once that step has been completed, we would debrief and determine, all right, who else do we need to bring in? What resources do we need to bring in? Who do we need to partner with to process? Yeah. And so PERC might be one of those resources. It would really just depend on, again, the uniqueness of the situation. Feel free to jump in, anyone else.
In addition to that, if there were a federal official coming to one of our schools asking for student information or asking for a student, the protocol dictates that that person stay outside, the school building needs to have identification, there needs to be warrants, and they need to reach out to the district office to confirm additional information. We may have to consult with legal counsel in the process of that as well.
Okay, thank you. As a comment, I guess part of my concern is still how well this information is disseminated. I know, for example, because as a parent at the high school, I get the digest summaries of the email. So the email that just came out earlier, the reiteration, there was, the subject line didn't get in there, it just looked like any other email. And I wonder if perhaps emails directly from the principals of various schools. For example, we do get more clear emails. I'm looking, I pulled up my computer, pulled up some emails that came when we had the student walkout at CHS. That was very explicitly from Principal Miller in the subject line. I wonder if that might get a little more attention than, to be frank, yet another email from the district.
I do appreciate that feedback, and that's something we can definitely consider. Our general practice is if it's going to all schools in the district, we send it from the district. If it's a school-specific message, it comes from the principal. And in this, I mean, that, with that feedback, that's absolutely something we can review and talk about with our principals.
Yeah, I would encourage that, and maybe a little link on the front page, the homepage of the school, of the district website, to the resources. That's everything I have. Thank you.
Director Lynn?
Many ongoing questions, but I really wanted to start by, with an apology. I want to say sorry to our families and our community and our staff because we've really failed you in this issue, and it's had real consequences with fear and anxiety in the community, and we've really failed to lead, and I'm sorry for that. We really need to take a much closer look at this and not just like any kind of common security situation. Safe zones don't exist anymore. We have administration who doesn't respect the rule of law. We'll don't, you know, so we need to have eventualities. So what if they bust in? What if they go past security? What if they go past and say they have a warrant and don't plan on presenting it? What if they don't say they need a warrant? We need to think of all these different eventualities because it's a matter of like when, not if. It's going to happen sooner or later. And so we can do so much more. We can say more, do more, reach out to our other elected officials, and raise these concerns that our community has to them and ask them to do more and demand that they do more. So this is going to be an ongoing thing. I think we need to work on our procedures to take out some of what I think is some very passive language of making it sound like this is an unlikely situation that might never happen. Again, it is a situation that is happening. We need to think of all those things. So I just hope you know that we're, it's going to ongoing conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mauring is on Zoom with us, and Director Mauring, if you have a comment or a question?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody, District Leadership Team, for putting that together. It's a lot of information to kind of synthesize right into a short presentation like this. And to Director Lynn's point, there, I think there is far more that we're doing at the district, because sometimes we can whittle down into something like that. And I do echo his comments as well, that, you know, a really deep dive on this ever-evolving situation is needed, and it is warranted, and I'm just grateful to know that we've been working on these protocols for a number of months now in time, in that there is ongoing training. So I'm glad to see that we're getting something out there that kind of summarizes everything together in one place versus having to look in a lot of different places, and just look forward to more of that coming out as well. Thank you again for everyone for putting that together for tonight.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Superintendent Rappaport, and maybe let the people go from the front table, the hot seat.
No, I just appreciate the efforts of the team. Like I said, this is a dynamic and evolving issue, and it is a multidisciplinary, sorry, multidisciplinary issue, so I appreciate the collaboration, and there's always room for growth.
I apologize. I said I would come back, and I didn't. So Director Solovski?
I actually, I would like a little bit more time to think through how I would like to ask my questions, and so I don't have them at this moment.
All right, all right.
I'm holding up.
And my assumption, Superintendent Owens, is that as we have additional questions, we would direct those to you. We obviously have these resources in front of us as well, so that we can get continued feedback about how things are going.
Absolutely.
Or differences or changes that might be occurring.
Yeah, and if there's specific concerns that board members have that they'd like to share and offer, that would be welcomed and appreciated, and we'd welcome and appreciate as much collaboration on this topic as possible because I think it's in our best interest for us as a school district to be aligned in this approach in terms of how we help support our students. So as much as we can work together and collaborate, I think would be, we'd be better off for it in serving our students.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate your time and your commitment to the safety of our staff and students and families. So Director Sutherland, we're not letting you go. We have our budget funding update and enrollment, so it's probably a good idea to work through that, and then we may be on to a break.
I always think of former Director Andrews when I start a presentation. She let me get through about five minutes of a budget update one time and then said, am I supposed to be looking at something because I'm not seeing a presentation? So, thank you, Director Andrews. Great, so good to be with you this evening. I'm providing the fall budget update for the Budget Committee and the Board. I believe we have some Budget Committee members joining us virtually, so appreciate them and their continued service to Centennial. So tonight, we'll be discussing enrollment and funding trends, the remainder of the outlook for the year, and then 26, 27 forecast for enrollment and funding. So currently, we're seeing a continued moderate decline in enrollment across our district. We've seen K through 5 stabilized largely, so year-over-year, we're just down a single student as of the enrollment as of December 1st. And then 6 through 8, we did see a decline of 73 students. Year-over-year, we've seen a slight increase at the high school level, 9 to 12, and then a slight decrease on the 18 to 21 and the outplacements. You'll notice that that is highlighted green, outplacements, fewer outplacements means more students are being served in Centennial, which we think of as a positive. So we're serving with our staff, so. But year-over-year, we do observe that enrollment was 55, 54, and it's dropped down from to 5,455 for this current year. So overall, we do see that decline of enrollment is lower than forecasted, so it will impact our funding. However, due to declining enrollment across the state, we do see a minor increase in our ADM funding on a per-student basis. So overall, revenue outlook remains stable at $82 million in the general fund. Expenses are uncertain at this point in time, as everyone is aware bargaining is ongoing, and we've exceeded our forecasted amount at this point in time. We've also added four additional licensed positions that were not in the original budget, and several special education positions that were not in the original budget. So currently, we're forecasting expenses of around $84 to $85 million for this current fiscal year versus the 83.5 that was originally budgeted, leading us to the expected deficit spending or exceeding our resources as provided by the state on a single-year basis of $2 to $3.5 million. So a planned spend-down was intended with the budget, but we may do a spend-down a little bit more than anticipated based on the current funding level. Risk factors that we're considering right now, as the governor has announced, that she's asking all departments to look at reductions of between 2.5% to 5% across the board, and Oregon Department of Education has forwarded those proposed reductions as well, unfortunately. We don't anticipate necessarily mid-year cuts from the governor or from the state, but it is, we are in the first year of the biennium, so potentially, second-year funding may not be as stable as we anticipate. Additionally, we've already seen reductions in our Student Success Act targeted support grants that we received for Latinx and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander grants that we received. Those were both cut by more than 50%. Enrollment continues to be a risk factor. Historically, we see a decline in enrollment from December through June for a variety of reasons. We see early graduation, we see transitions in the district, and other things going on which contribute to that decline in enrollment. So if that trend were to continue as it has in years past, we could see additional declines. And funding is evaluated by the state on a continuous basis. It's not a fixed for a period in time. Other additional risk factors are our licensed staff representing 63% of total spending on salaries and benefits for the general fund is, bargaining is ongoing, right? And so current proposed increases that we've made at the table based on authorization from the school board already exceeds the 4% that was budgeted for, and we're going, will be in mediation in February. For 2026, 27, again, the governor has called for potential reductions. If those were to come to fruition, we could see what was previously expected to be a 4% roll-up increase because the biennium splits the state school from 5149, so you typically see an increase in the second year. We could see that potentially not happen or be reduced. We could see continued enrollment decline that we saw this year. That is based on forecasting that we have. And then we have bargaining, potential settlement costs that are undetermined. So we do have bargaining with classified for 26, 27, or a classified employee group as well. So the starting point at this point in time is expenses are, if we were to do nothing but roll everything forward, do the same things that we budgeted this year for next year, we anticipate it to cost between $88.9 and $90 million. So just with the starting point, we'd be looking at between $3.6 and $4.7 million reduction, or deficit, rather. Risk factors, as previously noted, if those were to come to fruition, that would be an additional potentially $2 to $4 million in reduction in funding. We could face more rapid declines in enrollment, and again, just the unsettled contracts and going into bargaining additional contracts. So those are just risk factors that we have to consider when forecasting. So overall, we're just in a point of caution. I think that's consistent with every school district around the state and perhaps across the nation, and certainly every department in the state of Oregon, as the governors kind of put everybody on notice. So we have additional uncertainty, unfortunately, at the federal level. So several times in the past year, funding has been put on pause, reimbursements have been delayed, funds have been expended, and it's been delayed in receiving reimbursements and process, even processing the reimbursements or if they are going to be processed. We don't know if that uncertainty is going to continue, if that were to happen again. We continue to face other challenges, as noted, so it's just a time precaution really in the budget. Federal funds, the ESAR funds have sunsetted, and there's not additional sources of funds that appear to be coming. With that, I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. Director Lynn?
We've seen some stories about the state formula, undervaluing some schools with students in poverty. Have we been engaged with some of those conversations with the short session coming up about not only making sure it's calculated right, but making sure we get added weight for the special needs that we address here in our district?
Absolutely. I know that's coming up at the school business official level. Not only that, the updating of the ADM formula, additional weights, additional categories and considerations, accurately measuring. and considerations, accurately measuring, because is it being measured by the census? Is it being measured by real-time surveys? Is it being measured by direct certification for services or other support opportunities where it could be more accurately capturing, capturing what's going on in a specific community? Those are all things that we're lobbying for and advocating for as state school officials. We're also advocating for additional categories. There's increasing complexity that students present with and increasing need. And we have a very real moral and legal obligation to provide those services to our students. So we need the state to come alongside and provide that funding and make sure there's an updated formula. So students get the education and the support they deserve. We're also working on the high-cost disability and the disability percentage cap, a continuous list of opportunities for advocacy, or advocating facility equity in facilities. There continues to be rampant inequality in facilities. One district has versus another district and the funding that the local community may be able to provide where others cannot. So those, those conversations are ongoing.
To build on that, we have our government, East County Government Affairs Administrator Lisa Merrick, who's scheduled to come to our first board meeting in January to give us an update as it pertains to our upcoming legislative session. And I'll make sure that she incorporates that waiting issue into her presentation.
Director Harden?
I have the same question as Director Lynn about the ADM and the weighted, making sure they give us a big enough pie, piece of pie. Thank you.
Just one question, just to clarify my understanding. So we're looking at potentially an increase in the deficit spending. We were already planning on some deficit spending. So is that 2.5, that 2 to 3.5 billion, is that in addition to, or is that including the deficit we already were planning on?
For current year or for the future year projection?
I only wrote down current year, but I guess that would include future year as well.
Yeah. No, it's a great question. So the range has exceeded. You see it up to three and a half million at this point in time. That's the part that is increased. So it's not, it's not an additional $2 million. What was budgeted in the, in the adopted budget was $2 million and now it may go as high as three and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Whoops, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I apologize. Will, Director Morin, do you have any questions? And you need to unmute yourself, I believe.
There we are. None at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Southerton, board members, if you could indulge just a few more moments. We have just one more report and I'd like to get that. So we've already done through that particular part of our agenda. And that report is from our superintendent. So Superintendent Owens.
All right. Great. Thank you Chair Shields. Greeting board members. It's my pleasure and privilege to share with you this update about happenings in our school district. To start things off, this month, the district office display board features recent artwork done by students at Centennial High School in teacher Jenica Castillo-Hardens' class. On the wall are art pieces created by Art One students. For their graffiti-style name designs, students learned about the similarities and differences between street art and graffiti, how art can be impactful positively or negatively in public spaces, and how to create different lettering styles. This unit also touches on basic color theory with students applying these concepts of analogous colors and complementary colors to create their piece. Students used colored pencils and Sharpie markers to complete this project. Alongside the graffiti-style name designs, you'll see the neurographic art project, which is designed to help students see how art can be used to process emotions. It is a calming method that is particularly useful to work through feelings of stress or anxiety. Students had creative freedom to choose the colors and were able to complete the projects using watercolor paints or chalk pastels. Also on the board is a smaller exercise at the bottom called the Layered Value Project, where students learned how to use value and layering to create depth. The students used graphite for this project. Finally, in the cabinet display on the other side of the lobby, you'll see some food sculptures created by the Sculpture A class. Students created a meal that had some personal meaning to them, whether it was a favorite meal growing up, or something that reminded them of someone special to them, or something tied to a significant event in their life. They created these sculptures using toilet paper, watercolor paint, and Mod Podge, which I had to look up today to see what that was. They also designed and painted plates to complement their food using acrylic paint. Obviously, I don't know all of those things, so I had to rely on Jenica to email me those things so I could share them with you. And if you hadn't seen those, I would encourage you to do that on your way out of the lobby this evening. Changing gears, literally, last Thursday, I rode along with Centennial Middle School bus route number five driver Julie Bolsh. We braved the heavy rain and I had a valuable and enjoyable experience, even if I did feel a little bit like the principal on Ferris wheelers day off. In particular, Julie's skill, professionalism, and student-centered approach were evident throughout the route. She welcomed students warmly and addressed behavior with calm, dignity, and kindness. The visit also reinforced the strength of our overall transportation department. The consistency, the intentionality, and the care that these staff members bring to their work each day creates an environment that supports students and their families. On Tuesday, November 18th, we held our Fall Data Summit, the first of three this school year. Leadership teams from each school spent the day reviewing academic attendance, discipline, and perception data to understand current trends and their implications for teaching and learning. The summit provided both professional learning and structured time for teams to deepen their data literacy and prepare to lead similar analysis with their respective school staff. Throughout the day, teams identified strengths, surfaced areas for growth, and drafted initial action steps to guide ongoing refinement of their school improvement plans. These action steps will continue to evolve as schools monitor progress and revisit their work at our Winter Data Summit in March. This year also marks our transition away from contracted facilitation with district staff now designing and leading our data summits as part of Roadmap 27's continuous improvement cycle. A school-specific data summit for Centennial High School focused on ninth and 10th grade core subject areas is scheduled to take place just after winter break on Wednesday, June 7th, in the Centennial High School Community Room. And on that note, if you're interested in attending for a portion of that time to get a better idea of how this process works, let me know and I can provide you with more information. Over the last couple of weeks, our elementary teams have participated in district-wide standards mapping sessions to strengthen coherence and alignment in English language arts instruction. Grade-level teams from across the district met according to a coordinated schedule and worked collaboratively to determine which each critical and focal standard will be taught across the school year, ensuring alignment with state standards and school improvement goals. These sessions also helped clarify the difference between curriculum materials and academic standards, reinforcing that standards guide the instruction while curriculum serves as a tool. Using a shared framework, teachers mapped the scope, sequence, and pacing of standards and agreed on common understanding of learning targets. During additional sessions this year, grade-level teams will reach agreement on what proficiency looks like for each standard and develop common standards-based summative assessments. The resulting standards maps and pacing guides will anchor planning and PLC conversations throughout the year. This collective effort across all six elementary schools supports equitable access to core learning and keeps our instructional work closely aligned with Roadmap 27's focus on high-quality standards-based teaching. Today's staff from every school participated in the second session of our four-part professional learning series facilitated through our partnership with WestEd and supported by an Oregon Department of Education grant. The series is designed to strengthen tier-one equity teams in translating our equity commitments into building level professional learning and classroom practice. The December session, titled Putting High Expectations Into Action With Students and Adults, focused on two key areas: adopting a warm demander stance that pairs strong relationships with high expectations, and navigating resistance in ways that keep equity-centered conversations productive. Participants explored strategies for building students' elective capacity, examined common patterns of adult resistance, and planned how to integrate culture-responsive practices into upcoming school-wide professional learning. Each school's tier-one equity team involves two to four staff members, at least one of whom is an administrator. Teams were selected for their instructional strength, their grounding in equitable practices across attendance, behavior, social-emotional learning, and academics, and their strong relationships with students, families, and colleagues. Substitute coverage when needed continues to be funded through the district's Early Indicator and Intervention Systems Grant. And the next sessions are scheduled to take place on February 11th and April 15th, as teams continue developing monthly-based, building-based professional learning aligned to the profile of a graduate transformative SEL standards and our broader equity goals. Director Southerton, Chief Andreg, and I continue to meet biweekly with DLR representatives Karen Montavino and John Fulton Fulton to advance our long-range facilities planning process. Much of the early foundational work is well underway, including departmental, department-level interviews with curriculum, dining services, transportation, student services, IT, ELL, and federal programs, the superintendent's office, business services, communications, and career and technical education. DLR has also completed several school site reviews as well as staff listening sessions at most schools to gather additional on-the-ground insights for about current facility conditions and instructional needs. These collective inputs are helping establish a clear baseline of program and building needs across the district. Additionally, DLR has developed draft educational adequacy evaluation tools for elementary, middle, and high school sites, which will support upcoming review and prioritization work as the planning process continues. Tomorrow morning, I will join curriculum and instruction administrators and additional district leaders in an educational alignment conversation with DLR. The purpose of this meeting is to identify what our learning environments need in order to best support teaching and learning. And the outcomes of this discussion will guide DLR's educational suitability walks with principals at each school scheduled from early to mid-January. And that will all be based on the educational summit that we convened about a month ago. And there was a report provided that will be hopefully published soon. The team will convene later in January to review the findings from these school visits and departmental interviews, followed by a February session to begin prioritizing possible improvements. In parallel, we continue to refine the structure of the Facility Advisory Committee. And more information will be shared with the board and community after winter break, with a tentative plan to convene that committee beginning in March and meet monthly throughout the fall. That body will ultimately review the planning work, excuse me, this body being the board, excuse me, that body, let me back up a little bit. I'm sorry. If you get nothing out of this, I will just say, we're doing some work and there's more work to come. The Facility Advisory Committee will ultimately review the planning work and develop a facilities plan recommendation to the school board. Overall, the project remains on schedule with early information gathering and listening sessions now transitioning to deeper instructional alignment, facility assessment, planning, coordination, and planned community engagement early next fall. And we might want to have our DLR consultants come in the near future to provide an update. That's a little less mealy-mouth than what you just got from me. On a final note, I want to share that our board and our community wish for each of you to have a happy holiday season. The end of the year and the start of a new school year, or new calendar year brings with it opportunities for reflection, hope, and gratitude. As a learning community, we've established much in 2025 and we're looking forward to even more in 2026. So please accept my wishes for a break filled with special moments, memories. And I know not all of you are able to have a traditional winter break as we do in schools. Nevertheless, I hope you're able to take time off to relax, recharge, and connect with those that you care about and enjoy this holiday season. So with that, I invite any questions or comments you might have. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
We always go around, but Director Solsky, you always are in the middle. So let's start with you. If you have any questions, it's kind of always starting at the end.
I don't have any questions for Superintendent Owens, but because my processing speed is a little different sometimes, I do have a couple of other questions from the previous. So when we're done with this, if there's any way I could circle back to my questions on the ICE stuff. Thank you.
No questions. I'm really intrigued about the data summits and I will probably be reaching out to you about that. Definitely.
Director Lynn?
Just with the long-range facility planning, I hope that we can get as much information. And I'd love to just hear as much, you know, the data that they were collecting from everybody, not so much in addition to all the summaries and stuff. And then I was really happy to see the graffiti name design thing. We're always looking for, we always need more public art in our community. And it would be great for the community and the school district to partner and get some of these students out and creating some, you know, public murals and public art out in the community where we could appreciate it. Oh, yeah. And especially with the long-term facility planning, the TIF district is finally, on the Portland side, has finally been seated with a community planning. So there's some visioning on that side of the district.
Perfect.
To be done in terms of infrastructure.
Sounds good. I was scanning to see if Director Southerton's in the room. He's not. I'll make sure to pass it along to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Harden?
No questions. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Director Morin, first chair.
Thank you for the update. No questions or comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Director Solsky, is this, like, do you, would you want to do this before our break?
I don't care one way or the other. However, if people need to take a break in this bathroom, I'm happy to wait. If we can go, I'm happy to go.
All right. I think we've got everybody here. So, and then.
Apologies, we really can't hear in the back there. So we're gathering folks.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they're able to hear the question in case they.
So is the district tracking lists of when the ICE protocol has been initiated at the different sites?
To my awareness, it has not yet had a need to be initiated. So there has been nothing to track.
Okay.
No, we had one incident that was about two and a half or three years ago. And it was an individual who had come on campus and tried to gain entry. I think it might have been during the summer. And they were here for a particular staff member. And so that, in that case, we are aware of it. But as these come up, I think tracking it would be a great idea.
Yeah, I think that's important because I also, there's definitely a lot of, I'll just say, mixed feelings about what is really happening. And so I think that it would be great for us, like, you guys had said that there's been a couple of things that have happened already. But then you say that we haven't had anything. And so part of that is like, making sure that things are operationalized down, and then also under, like, making sure that we're tracking them so that we, as a board, can review what's happening and ensure that our community's needs are being met.
If I could just interject. For clarification, the ICE protocol is what happens when something happens on our campus. So that's what I was speaking to. Anything happening in terms of family support behind the scenes, that would be a student's response question.
Are you asking about tracking that?
I, I think that it would be good to know, not like, how many situations are around this issue? What are we, like, how many families are we helping support? How many family members do we know that have been, you know, taken? How many students are dealing with not having an adult in their home? And I know that this is information that, that we only get when people report it to us. But if people are reporting it to us, I think that's really information for us to collect.
One of the things that we've been cautioned about is being really discreet and brief and nondescript in anything that we are tracking, because we also don't want to create a database of these are individuals who've been detained or deported or immigration status. So we also are monitoring that very carefully as well.
That's a good point. It's, I mean, it's definitely a complicated situation. I think the other thing I want to say is really more of a question. And this is what has provided me the most pause, because I don't want to come across insulting to anyone. I truly believe that the teachers are here, you know, doing this work. I believe the district is here trying to protect the community. There's a disconnect, right? What I'm, and what, what the question that I have, and again, please, I don't want to offend anyone, but I couldn't think of a better way to say this. Are staff trusted to do, to like, use their professional common sense to do what's in the best interest of students? Do we, like, it just feels, yeah, I don't know exactly what I'm trying to say exactly. Like, we need. Empowered, maybe that's the better word. Like, if there's so much feeling in the room, I can feel it, right, about where we are and what we're doing. I, I just feel like there's more listening that needs to be done. Like, obviously, if there's something that the staff are feeling that's been happening and the district feeling isn't happening, like, let's, like, can we just have open communication somehow? Like, take the walls down and be like, what are you seeing? What are we seeing? Right? Can we, like, I think it's really important for us to be able to trust each other, that we are all coming from the intention of wanting we are all coming from the intention of wanting to protect our students and our community and their families. And it's not us against them, it's all of us together to, like, what can we do for these, for our kids? And so, again, I apologize if that came out funky. I'm not always very succinct, but thank you.
I, I will just say that I think we have to be careful, because there's a double edge to all of this. And training is key for us, as board members and community members, training is key for any of our staff. Really appreciated the thought about, and I forget the impact of somebody like a bus driver has every single day. We understand our teachers see our students every single day, but we have these other staff members amongst us as well. And that ongoing training and the reminder, I teach at a community college, we are in an open campus. It's a little different. And the training that I'm receiving as a, as a faculty member is a little different, but I carry something in my wallet that helps remind me of the things that I'm responsible for as an instructor on that campus. And it's, it's something that we need to continue to work on, and it's hard. None of this work is easy, I don't know what we do, so. Just appreciate everybody who can, can keep it going. Appreciate that you took the time to, reminded me to circle back, an apology. All right, it is 7:56. We have an executive session that is scheduled next, so what we're going to do is break. Let's take a, what, about a 10-minute break? So if we could get back here at seven, oh, do we need more than a 10-minute break? No, let's try to keep, because we've got a big agenda with other things coming up as well, and interviews coming up. So let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. So just flip to 57, so add to that.
Question, clarify, is there going to be public forum before or after the executive session?
After the executive session.
Is there any way we can move that forward? Because it seems like everybody will have to leave and stand outside and then come back in.
Yeah, I have.
It seems inefficient use of people's time.
I have a schedule that I have to keep with the, with the people, the staff that are giving us our information, so apologize for that. Okay, thank you, let's go on our break.